All right. Well, welcome. I'd like to call to order the Franklin Regional Board of School Directors Committee of the whole meeting for Monday, August 18th, 2025. Ms. Wolf, roll call, please.
Mrs. Woolley?
Here.
Mrs. Buccher?
Here.
Mr. Fizlowski?
Here.
Dr. Eshelman-Rainey?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Zebra?
Here.
Mr. Phallett?
Mr. Krymski?
Here.
All present.
We did not have an executive session this evening, so now I'll just turn right over to Dr. Pirino and the superintendent's report.
I'm going to begin the superintendent's report by recognizing Mr. Greg Nevin. Greg Nevin was a member of the Franklin Regional School Board for eight years. He was instrumental in working with the board and the community to bring the vision for Franklin Regional Intermediate School and the Franklin Regional Primary School to reality. I just want to take a moment to recognize his service to this school district and this community. Not only was he a board member, but someone who I consider to be a true friend. And so if we could just have a moment of silence for Greg. Thank you. Beginning of the school year is a pretty exciting time. It's an exciting time for our students. It's a very exciting time for our staff. And as a parent, I know it's a very exciting time for parents. That said, there's a lot of work that goes into the opening of school to make that happen, from extensive amounts of time for planning for students to enter our buildings, from an educational planning standpoint, from a transportation standpoint with bus routes and bus drivers, from a technology standpoint to have that up and going, and from curriculum ordering and cleaning buildings and getting things ready. And you can see a lot of the results of that work with what's happening around our campuses. So I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone who really worked diligently to bring this school year into focus and into reality. And there's a lot of excitement, but it doesn't just happen. So I want to take this opportunity to thank my administrative team, the principals, our custodial staff, maintenance staff, and cabinet-level administrators for all their hard work and their diligence. I also want to take this opportunity, it's been, we've had a number of great days of in-service with our teachers. They've engaged in some of the mandatory state trainings that are required for us to be able to move forward, but as well as the type of collaboration and training around getting ready for our students and continuously working to grow professionally and personally. And so I want to thank them for their efforts and for the curriculum team that put together the professional development plan over the last couple of days. I also want to take this opportunity to wish our staff and our students the best of luck in the '25-'26 school year. We're looking forward to great things this year, and I can't wait for kids to begin rolling in on Wednesday morning. Right now, I know there's also been a lot of meet and greets happening across the district where parents and children have been going into schools and classrooms to meet their teachers. And this morning, when we were with staff, it was palatable, their level of excitement to welcome our students. So a lot of excitement for the '25-'26 school year, and I can't wait. Friday nights, actually, this week, we have some soccer games, and Friday night, we go into football, golf's rolling, fall sports. This morning, we started off our kickoff session with, obviously, the National Anthem, the Alma Mater, and the FR Fight Song. We're here, it's ready to go. So that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pirino. Now we will move on to public comments.
I want to say, welcome back to everyone. We are here, and school's almost started. I know for many of the administrators, it's been busy for them already, but our students will be at it very, very soon, so welcome back. And I also want to say, I want to look very forward to the football game coming up because I can't wait to see the band when they're in their new uniforms, which we've waited a good, long while for. I look forward to seeing them and the program that they have this year. I want to comment on the book, Miss Peregrin's Home for Peculiar Children. I'm curious as to anyone who may have read this, I wonder if you've read it. I've read it. And I don't know if anyone's read that book. I don't know what grade it's for. It only says middle school, so I'm wondering what grade that they plan on using that for. In reading that book, it's a very scary story. It's very dark, and it's a sci-fi story. It's strange, they go from different time zones, one to the other, back and forth. And on top of that, it's got the foul language throughout. And I had, I had bad dreams several nights after reading that book. So I'm really curious as to what is the educational value attributed to using that book? And so I'm hoping somebody can answer that for me. And then can parents opt out if it's something that they don't want their kids to be reading? Can they opt out? And what would the replacement be if they do opt out? And that's it. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to any solicitor comments.
No, thanks.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the first consent agenda item, the novel list for K through two primary school approval. Dr. Boginski?
Yes. Good evening. This is the novel list that was placed on 30-day review back in June. So we are asking for approval of this novel list for use in small groups for enrichment.
I will open up for any questions for Dr. Boginski. All right, we'll move on to Penn State University-Hamel Family Professional Development.
This is the professional development agreement with Penn State, much like we had with them last year. We had four teachers engage with that professional development last year, and we sat in on those presentations at the end and were very impressed by the work that they did. And we are now going to engage with the same presenters for our 28 teacher leaders. Again, this is just professional development for our teacher leaders.
Open the floor for questions. All right, we'll move on to the Renaissance. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Jen, could you just let everyone know where the funds are coming to pay for that?
Yes, I apologize. It did say pending receipt of Title II funding, which had been on hold, but that Title II funding is coming through. So that is how it's funded, and that is professional development, federal money.
Any additional questions? All right, the Renaissance?
So we currently have a partnership with Renaissance for our STAR 360 benchmarking tool, as well as the NearPod tool, which we've used for multiple years. We had used Freckle, which is another of their resources, previous to and during COVID, and then ended that because we had engaged some other resources. We had a team of about 20 teachers and teacher leaders who met multiple times throughout the school year to review, I believe, five different resources, including Prodigy, iXL, Dreambox, and some other resources. And they determined that they would like to try, going back to Freckle, it has improved, and it also includes something called Lolilo, which is a literacy piece for young readers. And it will engage with our data in the STAR 360 data. It also engages with NearPod. So we are seeking approval for a one-year contract. And to mention as well, we did, the team across the K-12 decided to remove Kami as one of our resources because it was not being used by many teachers at all, and it had been a COVID resource, really, and we have a lot of other things that do what it does. So we removed that. We also received a discount on NearPod and a discount on Freckle to try it for the year. So the cost is kind of made up for by removing Kami and those discounts. So it's a kind of a sum-zero cost differential.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Dr. Boginski. We will move on to the middle school novel approval. Dr. Delp?
Good evening, everyone. We're seeking approval, a motion to approve Miss Peregrin's Home for Peculiar Children. There's some questions here this evening regarding that novel, and there was an extensive presentation provided by Ms. Cooley during the May Curriculum Committee meeting that addressed the proposal to replace a current nonfiction book, which is entitled 10 Days in a Madhouse, with this book, this novel also being nonfiction. And she very eloquently outlined the connections between this book and Lexile Level as it relates to middle school children, particularly eighth grade. Also, the ability to connect and the themes that the middle school are using curricularly as they relate to identity, belonging, and self-discovery, as well as the opportunity to be able to do cross-curricular work associated with the history department as it relates to World War II. So there are a lot of tangible connections that are being made between this nonfiction potential resource and the history curriculum. And with any particular resource of this type, students who may wish to not participate in this would reach out first to the teacher for potential alternative assignments.
When you say that it ties into the history, is this with the National History Day as far as?
No, this is actually, as I read here, emphasize both the historical context of World War II and literary, and the literary analysis of the novel. By blending these two subjects, students can better understand the psychological and social impact of war on children, while also exploring literary techniques such as symbolism, character development, and theme.
Got you. Thank you. Any questions? What grade is this for?
Eighth grade.
Thank you.
If they opt out, do you have another book that they would read instead, or if a family would want to opt out?
I don't have a particular resource available to me at this time, but that would be a conversation to be had with the teacher that would hit those themes and make sure that those standards are still being hit in a meaningful way.
I have another question. I hope you can hear me. My mic's not working. Okay, now it's working. This is categorized as fantasy, horror, and witchcraft. I don't like the witchcraft part of that. It doesn't need to be that one. There's a reference in there to Jeffrey Dahmer eating flesh and eating people's souls and cannibalism. And I mean, I realize that kids like these kind of books, like Harry Potter and Star Wars and all that, but there's no noble theme in this book. I mean, there's no hero against the villains, and it's just people, it's like the same day repeating over and over, and running away from these whites, whatever they are, that eat the flesh and eat the souls of people. And it's kind of a dark, dark story. I just wondered, well, if it replaced a book about 10 Days in a Madhouse, I guess they're looking for kind of books that maybe the kids...
It's a little lighter.
It's lighter than that one. I'm just curious. I would think that if parents knew some of these themes, they might not be real excited about this book. That's just my thought process.
Did this one have a warning on it for parents? Or was that the other one?
I'm not aware of a warning.
How old are the kids that are reading this book?
14, possibly 15.
14 or 15?
Any additional questions or comments? We will move on to Dr. Smith and the agreement for the K-12 science consulting services.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, this is turned into an annual contract. This is in year four with Liz Mira, our K-12 science consultant. As you could see, based off the description and her scope of work, K-5, she has worked with the implementation of mystery science, and then 6-12 with the continuation of the SEAL standards, and now starting to look at some best instructional practices. And she will be joining us for 10 sessions, which ends up being about five two-day sessions throughout the year, K-12 spread out based off of the needs of the staff and the students. Any questions? And it's also worth noting, this is also funded through Title II with our federal grant monies.
Any additional questions?
Okay, thank you. And moving into the math realm, this is our third year with our, well, I would probably say, 3-12 math consultant, Anne Burgunder, out of New York University. Again, this is also funded by Title II federal monies, and she will be joining us for a total of 14 sessions. And she is working on best practices, basically a model that looks at planning, you provide the instruction with some reflection at the end. In addition to that work, she will also be working with our K-12 math curriculum and starting to look at some of our vertical alignment and providing some gap analysis along the way. And again, that's also Title II, if I didn't mention that. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Smith?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Rogowski.
Good evening. I have four agenda items for your consideration. The first two are for special education placements, and the last two are for services. So the first one is our annual agreement with New Story Schools. Our second is with Presley Ridge. Now, Presley Ridge does state that it's an addendum. The school board did approve the original contract back in 2017. The addendum is just to update the cost of those particular services. If that's something that you're interested in seeing, it would be approved in the 2017 school year. The next agenda item is for the Western Pennsylvania School for Blind Children Outreach Service. This is for blind and/or visually impaired services for our students that attend the Franklin Regional School Districts. So these are services that we contract with, so those students can receive those services here within our school setting. And the last agreement is deaf, hard-of-hearing interpretive services for students who attend Sunrise School. Sunrise School is a separate school. It's run by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, and students who attend there may need to receive deaf and/or hard-of-hearing services, and that's what this contract is for. Any questions about those four agenda items?
Any questions for Dr. Rogowski?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be bus and van drivers, Mrs. Cowell, as well as bus stops.
Good evening. I have two agenda items for you this evening. These are the two that I try and bring to you quarterly every year. The first one I have is our current list of bus and van drivers to start out the school
Any questions?
And the second item is the current bus stops.
Any questions on the bus stops?
Did you get enough drivers for this year? Are you short?
Yes. So unfortunately, we're starting the year with two drivers down due to some medical issues. Hopefully, some of the drivers that are on medical leave can return. We have had some departures. The good news is, we do have two in the pipeline that are going to try and go for their CDL. So some of the office team will be working, and another member of the Myers team is, Myers family, I should say, is trying to get their CDL, and it sounds like she's going to succeed, and she'll be driving as well when needed. And then recently, Deena put out a publication for us that had some good features about being a bus driver. No summers if you don't want to, no evenings, no weekends, paid training. So hopefully, that might capture some. There was a lot of traction on those posts that she made for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, we'll start with stadium water heater replacement.
How's everybody doing tonight? Good. So replacement of a stadium hot water heater down on the visitor's side. We found out through the pressure spikes we were having at the middle school with the main that it actually fed up to that. So with those pressure spikes, it popped open that hot water tank. We had to replace it. However, we could not replace it until we replaced the main at the middle school, which is now done. So we are ready to go ahead and do this project. This will be for the unit itself. We will do all the installation in-house.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? What are we doing to resolve the pressure spikes?
It's already done. We fixed, we replaced the whole main at the middle school.
Okay.
That was done this summer. Next item is a new ductless split system for the high school counseling center. About two years ago, the univent coil popped in that univent up in the counseling center. It flooded the whole basement. Since then, they were trying to find the part to replace that. However, they do not manufacture that anymore. It would have cost just as much to fabricate a part to put in there. There's no guarantee that univent wouldn't have kept running smoothly, so it was just easier to replace. That counselor currently has no heat in her office, so we'll get that taken care of.
Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schekengas, update on the firewall?
Good evening. The first agenda item I have is the firewall. We had an issue with firewall. I presented that last board meeting. There was a miscommunication with the MSP on the billing of the installation. We finally got that all worked out, and we want to bring that back. Originally, what happened was, I assumed that the MSP would, the installation of the firewall would be under contract. They assumed that we'd just be paying for it, and they were going to bill me afterwards, and I told them that we can't do business like that. So we had to have the installation and the hardware on one invoice, and that's what I'm presenting tonight. Any questions?
Second item I have tonight is the e-Health Tools, e-Healthy Tools. This is a program for our nurses for do state reporting and other things. This is replacement of the Power School module, health module. We got the Power School module. We've tried everything in our power to get it to work for our nurses. We could not get it to work correctly, even though we were promised by Power School would work. It did not work. I have been working with my rep currently at Power School. I asked them for a credit for the cost that we would be paying for e-Healthy Tools. She said she would get back to me. I heard from her today, and it's the first time I heard from her in a while, and she said that she was currently working with billing department to get us credit, get us that credit for that cost. So basically, if all works out as planned, we should just swap one health module up for the other that we're familiar with. And just for your knowledge, we have used e-Healthy Tools for years, up until when we purchased Power School, e-School Plus in 2013, around there. We moved to their health program, and then now we're moving back to e-Healthy Tools.
Any questions on that?
The last item I have is the AIU Digital Trust Agreement. This is a digital trust. This is, I guess, a new organization within the AIU. This is going to help us with our data privacy, our data governance, all those types of things, our consent. They're going to help with acceptable use policies, all those items around HERPA, FERPA, and COPA. This group is going to help us with. And they currently are in the Allegheny IU, and it was only for the Allegheny School Districts. Recently, me and a colleague of mine here in Westmoreland approached them and asked if they would open this up to Westmoreland because we need some guidance, some assistance with all these new laws, and they graciously agreed. And that's why I'm bringing this agreement forward. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schekengas. Mr. Perry, we'll start with appointments and contracts.
Good evening. Tonight, we have the annual agreement with Medic One to provide standby service at sporting events, as well as on-call service for staff, students, and visitors during the school
Any questions on that contract?
Next, for gifts, grants, and donations this month, $1,150 from the Graeble Foundation for the district's participation in future-driven schools. This covers a portion of the district's membership in AASA, as well as offsetting costs for attendance at national conferences. And then separately, a $1,000 grant from the Graeble Foundation for an additional professional development opportunity.
Any questions on gifts, grants, and donations? All right, budget transfers?
Yes, this month for budget transfers, we have $1,904,681.96 for the general fund, $20,943.31 for the athletic fund. Obviously, these are much higher than we typically see on a monthly basis, but these are annual year-end transfers, just to have everything cleaned up in preparation for our annual audit.
Any questions on budget transfers?
Then lastly, asking the board to ratify a natural gas commodity agreement between the district and United Energy Trading LLC. This would be the second commodity purchase covering the period September 2025 through August of 2028. As you may recall, we utilize Keytext as our consultant and purchasing agent related to utilities. They recommend us using a portfolio approach, so we made the first buy in November of 2024 just to try to balance out the market effects. As I said, this is the second buy. You'll see the various pricing over the terms. In year one, it's $3.51 per decatherm. Year two, $3.84. In year three, $3.76. And there will likely be one additional commodity purchase still forthcoming to meet the needs for this three-year period.
Any questions on the natural gas?
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pirino, I'll turn it over to you for the Panther Gymnasium Scoreboard Agreement.
Thank you. As you know, we offer sponsorship opportunities on the Franklin Regional scoreboards in the stadium, in the gymnasium, and in the natatorium or the pool. And we have a number of partners who use that opportunity to engage in sponsorship of our spaces. This is for an extension of an agreement with Met's Culinary for $3,000 per year and to $200. year and two 250-person fundraising or school-based events each year in exchange for, for that publication on the scoreboard. And they are located in the gymnasium. Any questions?
Up next, the PSBA slate of candidates?
Looking for, PSBA is looking for approval for their slate of candidates for, for a number of positions. And so it looks as if they, as in past years, they're not asking you to break out and vote for specific candidates, but they're looking for you to vote for a slate of candidates that they've brought forward.
Any questions on the slate of candidates? Okay, thank you. I will turn it back over to home healthcare contract, Dr. Delp.
Yes, tonight, we're seeking a motion to approve the annual contract with Biata Home Healthcare Incorporated for nursing services from August 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2026. And again, this is an existing partnership and an annual contract renewal.
Any questions on the home healthcare contract? All right, policy review?
Seeking a motion to approve the first reading of the following policies and move to a second reading. Policy 610, purchases subject to bid or quotation. Policy 611, purchases budgeted. Policy 626, federal fiscal compliance. Policy 626.1, travel reimbursement, federal programs. And policy 827, conflict of interest.
Any questions on those policy first reads? All right, and lastly, personal agenda.
We're seeking a motion to approve the following personnel items to be provisionally approved upon submission of appropriate documentation and other required forms as prescribed by state and federal regulations.
Any questions on, on personnel? All right, thank you, Dr. Delp. With that, I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Mark, second. Vince, all in favor? Aye. All right.
Excuse me. I want to break. Can I sign up still to do public comment for the second meeting?
That meeting is, if you need to use the facilities, please do so. Anybody else? Well? All right. With that, we will move to call to order the Franklin Regional School Board Director's regular meeting for Monday, August 18th, 2025. And now we will stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement, we, the Franklin Regional School community, strive for excellence, learning, achievement and citizenship in all we do. I need, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wolf, roll call, please.
Mrs. Woolley? President? Mrs. Butcher?
Here.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Here.
Dr. Ashman Riney?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Wyman?
Here.
Mr. Zebra?
Here.
Mr. Fallett?
Present.
Mr. Kremski?
Here.
Thank you. Now I'll need an approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes for June 16th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Mark, second. Vince, hearing any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I also need approval of the minutes, for the regular meeting, for the minutes of June 16th, 2025.
Motion to approve as well.
Mark? Vince? Hearing any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, now I will move over to Dr. Pirino for future dates and upcoming topics.
So this follows out of reports and information and since we're in the regular meeting, I wanted to also provide information on two more things. One is a thank you. I want to take the opportunity to thank the Murresville Police as well. We take safety and security very seriously and each year, we provide updates to our staff and training to our staff. Murresville Police came in on Friday and provided craze training to all, all district staff. Again, we were always appreciative of our partnership with the Murresville Police and that level, high level of collaboration serves, serves our students, serves our staff and serves our community. Also, I want to take a moment and I know she won't want, want this, this, but recognition, but PSBA every year recognizes those board members based upon five-year increments of service as school directors. And this is Deb Woolley's fifth year as a school director, so please give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's important to note that our school directors are community volunteers. They volunteer their time, their talent, their effort, their energy, their passion and without, not a lot of people jump, jump forward to be counted, to try to make a difference. And so I just want to thank Ms. Woolley for doing this more than once and truly appreciative of her, of her work as well as the work of the board. So jumping back into the reports, future dates include August 25th, there's a policy committee at 6:00 PM in the administrative offices. And then our next committee of the whole meeting and, and regular meeting is here in the Murresville Municipal Building at 7:30 on September 15th, 2025. Upcoming topics include annual agreements, capital items, grants, gifts and donations, personnel and policy review. And that concludes, concludes reports and information.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pirino. We will move on. I need an approval of the financial reports, so I need approval first for the treasurer's report for June and July 2025.
So moved.
Scott, with the second. Deb, hearing any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now I will need an approval for the list of bills and the list of bills for August 2025 are the following, paid bills, general fund of $7,993,000, I'm sorry, let me read that again, $7,993,017.91. Athletic fund of $52.03 for a total paid bills of $793,069.94. Unpaid bills of general fund, $1,201,072.76. Capital reserve fund of $1,353,666. Athletic fund of $10,342.74 for a total unpaid bills of $2,565,081.50. Grand total of $3,358,151.44. Food services of $3,077.19 for a grand total, including food services of $3,361,228.63. I need a motion to approve the list of bills for August 2025.
So moved.
Mark, second.
Second.
Vince? Any objections, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We'll move on to public comments and Kristi Troutman.
Thanks so much and I appreciate the opportunity to sign up in between meetings. My name is Kristi Troutman. I live on Sloane Wood Drive here in Murresville. And I just wanted to take a minute to speak to the Mrs. Peregrine's book that is being recommended. I know there were several comments and questions raised by people who it sounded like hadn't yet had a chance to themselves read the novel. And so I just wanted to say, I read the novel several years ago and it's a fantastic novel. I think it's part of a series. I couldn't wait for the next book in the series to come out. There's a lot of books in the curriculum that are like, have to read books. This is a get-to-read book and I think there's really important and very middle school appropriate themes. A little boy loses his beloved grandfather. He finds out some things about himself that he didn't know, tied to things about his family he didn't know. He has to, you know, feels like he doesn't belong in the world. He finds his way, finds his tribe, you know, fights the bad guys and then there's some cool monsters thrown in. I didn't think that there was anything really alarming about the book and as Dr. Delp said, there's many really important themes that can be drawn out from the literary part of it. And if we can teach kids in a way that they also love what they're learning, I think all the better. So I just wanted to offer that. Thanks very much and welcome back.
Thank you. All right, we will move on. We will move on to solicitor comments. Thank you very much. Now I open the floor for any items to be removed from the consent agenda items for separate action by members of the board.
President, number 26.
Okay. Any other items? All right, we will move forward. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items one through 25.
So moved.
Mark, second.
Second.
Scott, hearing any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. We will pull out action item 26. Any, just.
I would like to abstain.
Gotcha, all right. Mr. Solicitor, with that, do we need to go to a roll call for him to abstain?
Yeah, let's do a roll.
All right. Ms. Wolf, roll call for consent agenda, I actually, let's, need a motion to approve the consent agenda items and we'll move to a roll call vote.
So moved.
Mark, second. Josh, Ms. Wolf, roll call, please.
Mrs. Woolley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Yes.
Dr. Ashman Riney?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Abstain.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Zebra?
Yes.
Mr. Fallett?
Yes.
Mr. Kremski?
Yes, okay. Excellent, thank you. And I'll move now to Dr. Pirino for some acknowledgement.
So I remember early in my career, one of my most exciting times were, was when I was first hired as a teacher. And I happened to have the opportunity to be hired as a teacher in my home school district and it was a tremendous honor that even today brings back positive memories. Tonight, we have two candidates with us and, who were just approved. Emily Ezak, she's a special education teacher at the primary school and Kara Souls, who will be a learning support teacher at the intermediate school and they're both with us. Please stand. Congratulations. That's the other thing I need to recognize, HR staff as well as the entire administrative team, the thousands and thousands of hours cumulatively that were spent interviewing. And I said this morning to our new, to our teachers that each year, the, the process to screen candidates has become more and more rigorous and, and truly, and as we include our teacher leaders in that process, it's even raised the price of poker even more. So obviously, very proud of these two Franklin Regional graduates as well as all of our, our new hires. Congratulations to all of them.
Thank you and welcome. And with that, I will throw out, I need a motion to adjourn the regular director's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Mark, second. Deb, with that, oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed. All right, everyone, have a great evening and a good start to the school year. Thank you.